Form a few test cases, test scenarios. So, we started with the Tuttle Estates subdivision, which would be the farthest north subdivision on Meadow Lane. We had completed baseline traffic studies before any of the improvements were constructed out there, and that gave us an idea of what the number of vehicles that travel there on a daily basis, and also the average speed the vehicles were traveling. Within the complete streets policy, there were multiple measures that were considered for traffic calming. They ranged from curb extensions, raised pedestrian crosswalks, additional striping, traffic circles, signage, and shared lanes. With the geometry limitations along Meadow Lane, some of these traffic calming measures might not be appropriate. So, to start out, we actually started out with a traffic calming island and also a chicane. The chicane and the traffic calming island are both physical, what would be physical obstructions in the roadway meant to slow people down and also get their attention. We did also install permanent pavement markings at the entrance to all of the subdivisions along Meadow Lane where they intersect arterial roadways such as 127th, 135th, and 143rd Street. We will continue with additional pavement markings on Meadow Lane at Lockport Street now that I just completed most of their roadwork at that intersection. We did complete the pavement markings, and you'll see later in the presentation here, we did notice a little bit of, we did notice a speed reduction in Tuttle Estates. We don't know if it's directly attributed to the pavement markings or some of the other measures we did up there. So, one of the other measures we did up in Tuttle Estates was a temporary traffic circle, which shown now is a permanent, what would be a permanent traffic circle, which would be a concrete curb and gutter circle with some nice landscaping inside, low maintenance and low growth, so it would remain, sightlines would remain. Like I said, this is what a conceptual proposed traffic circle would look like. The next slide here shows the actual traffic circle that was, temporary traffic circle that was installed. This was done with some yellow delineators. These are similar to the permanent delineators we have on 135th Street at Route 59. This temporary traffic circle was in approximately a month, and this was in during the school year, so we did see a lot of school traffic and also buses navigating around this traffic circle. With this traffic circle, we saw a reduction in speed depending on what leg of the intersection you were at of between three and six miles an hour. So, I have a summary slide at the end, but we did see a reduction in speed with the temporary The other traffic calming measure we did install in Tuttle Estates were the curb extensions, and this was done at an existing four-way intersection. This was at the intersection of Meadow Lane and Pavilion Place. The main goal of installing the curb extensions at this intersection was to bring some more visibility to the stop sign. We did have a lot of resident concerns about cars either not stopping at the stop sign completely or missing it altogether. So, the goal of this wasn't necessarily to reduce speed, but to really provide more visibility for the actual four-way stop sign. But we did see a speed reduction in the approach legs to the intersection of up to two miles an hour. It wasn't consistent on all the legs, but one or two of the legs did show a reduction in speed. And once again, this is a photo of the actual temporary installation showing the yellow delineators at all four corners. I should note, I should have mentioned this before, but Public Works staff did install these traffic calming measures, so as we get into next year, we do have these delineators in our garage, so we can pull these out next year and reuse them. So, as I had mentioned before, we did see speed reductions out there for really all the traffic calming measures we did consider out there. The biggest reduction in speed, or largest reduction in speed that we saw was northbound Meadow Lane, which was north of Pastoral Drive. Before we did anything out there, the average speed was approximately 31 miles an hour. Once we did have the traffic calming measures in place, we saw the average speed reduced to 25 miles an hour. That was the largest reduction in speed. In the vicinity of the traffic circle, the speeds reduced between three and six miles an hour. And then, as you look on the bottom of the sheet, that would be farther south near, that would be Pavilion Place and Pastoral, or Pavilion Place and Meadow, we saw a reduction in speed depending on what leg of the intersection you're at of approximately two miles an One thing to remember with the traffic studies is, when we do a traffic study, we generally do a 24-hour study, so it's really a snapshot in time. It's always possible if we did the study one day earlier in the week or one day later in the week, we might have slightly different results, but they are average speeds and average vehicles per day. This year, we're going, this upcoming summer, we're going to evaluate Meadow Lane on a monthly basis if we can acquire additional traffic counters. So, as I mentioned, the temporary traffic circle was, we did see a speed reduction of three to six miles an hour. If we do, if the Village Board decides to move forward with a permanent traffic signal at this, at this location, I would recommend eliminating the stop signs on the two legs of the intersection. Generally, with the other traffic circles we have in town, they are uncontrolled, so that the cars basically yield when they're coming into the intersection, and to be consistent with the other traffic circles, I would make this one similar, or recommend to have it signed similarly. And the other, the temporary curb extensions, we did see a speed reduction there, but with the cost of installing the temporary curb extensions, they may be better served at a location where we have more pedestrian traffic such as near a school. There is a school down in Liberty Grove that we will be evaluating temporary traffic calming measures this upcoming year, so then we can see if we see a similar, or if not greater, reduction in speed, or at least we can determine from the students out there walking and their parents if cars are actually adhering to the stop sign condition. While the temporary traffic circles were in place, we did receive some feedback from residents out there. It was fairly limited, but most of the comments could probably be summarized, that the people, they weren't in favor of the traffic circle. It wasn't necessarily the traffic circle itself, it was the aesthetics of it. If we did do a permanent installation out there, it would be similar to the slide I had shown earlier with the landscaping. Other residents did mention that they didn't feel there was a speeding problem to begin with out there, and they didn't know why we were installing the temporary measures. So, moving forward in 2016, we're going to continue with placement of temporary measures farther south on Meadow Lane. This will include Walker's Grove, Prairie Knoll, Dayfield, Liberty Grove, and the Whispering Creek subdivisions. The Liberty Grove and Whispering Creek subdivisions couldn't be completed this year due to the traffic signal going in at Lockport and Meadow Lane, so that's why we waited on those. And then, to get an accurate idea of the effectiveness of the traffic counters in Tuttle Estates, we did decide to wait on the Walker's Grove and Prairie Knoll traffic calming measures. So, in addition to the placement of temporary traffic calming measures, we'll continue to evaluate the new traffic pattern at Meadow and Lockport Street due to the traffic signal. As I mentioned, we'll perform monthly studies along Meadow Lane with and without temporary traffic measures. And then, lastly, we'll continue with the integration of complete streets on other projects within the village. That includes our resurfacing and capital improvements. One of the recent projects we have brought before the board was the 127th Street Reconstruction Project, and with that, we are integrating a shared use path into that project as well as at least one or two crossings across 127th Street. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions.
I have a general question. Scott, it might not be something that you would expect for us to ask tonight, maybe another staff member may have the answer. The permanent traffic circle is illustrated on page seven.
Yes.
Does any staff member have a rough estimate on a conservative cost of something like that, obviously without like a fancy fountain or a gold-plated Village of Plainfield sign, just something very basic?
Prelimarily, we have looked at rough costs for traffic calming measures such as that, and it's probably in the $50,000 range. It is quite costly, but it does seem to be effective from what we've seen.
Great, thank you very much.
I know you made mention that you were looking to add or review further south in Walker's and Liberty Grove as well. Was there any thought about the location where you chose the first one at Pastoral instead of, it seems like it's getting value, so why not maybe move it further into the subdivisions to maybe increase that value longer? In other words, it's almost really the last, what, stop sign, almost the last cross street before you hit 127th, correct?
Yep, I believe Pastoral is this, I believe there's one more street north of Pastoral before you get to 127th Street. But this upcoming year, we will be evaluating other measures which would include a temporary traffic circle in the Walker's Grove subdivision.
Well, Pastoral, if I remember correctly, was chosen because of the east-west connection that ties into some of the other subdivisions and the...
Yeah. Vehicles per day, Pastoral does handle a large amount of traffic, so that is one reason why we had chosen Pastoral, and just working north to south, it made sense. And in Tuttle Estates, that was the best place to evaluate a traffic circle. In Walker's Grove, preliminarily, we were actually looking at Sunderland. It's a little bit different. We see elevated speeds in that area near Sunderland and Meadow Lane, but that is a three-way intersection there, so it is a little bit different than any other traffic, it would be different than any other traffic circle within the village, but it can still be evaluated.
Do you have counts on Meadow through Tuttle? When you did this analysis, do you know what you have?
Yes, we do have the traffic counts. I don't have the vehicle per day counts with me, but we do have them.
I'd like to say that six miles an hour is not insignificant when there are children in the neighborhood and the stopping distance of a potential vehicle. And then, the question bouncing off of Trustee Pex's comments on the cost of it, are there any more or other aesthetically pleasing varieties of temporary structures that you can put in the summer? I mean, I'm assuming this is all to slow the speeds down during the summer when the children are out, maybe not as much during the winter when the snowplows need to go through.
Yeah, and that's one of the main reasons we are not continuing the studies during the winter is because of the snowplow, and they don't, the snowplows generally don't play nicely with the plastic delineators.
Is there anything out there that's marketed that is better looking than the yellow pylons? Or have we looked?
Yeah, there may be other options out there. One of the advantages of the yellow pylons is their visibility, but that is also a disadvantage, you know, at least we've heard that from some of the residents out there regarding the aesthetics, but that is something we can look into.
Scott, how many residents have you heard from? Because this seems to have been an ongoing thing for us, as I know I've heard from many residents, and I'm sure some of the other trustees have as well. Is this something that we want to pursue, asking more questions, should we not ask more questions?
During the study, when we had the temporary traffic calming measures, we're out for approximately a month, and we probably heard from 10 to 12 residents during that time, and probably eight to 10 were regarding the aesthetics. Before we did install these, and I didn't mention it, and I really should have, we did send a letter to, we did send a letter to each resident that lives along Meadow Lane within the vicinity of the traffic calming measures to let them know they were going in, and also we did provide our contact information if they did have concerns about them.
Thank you.
The comments that you received though, Scott, where you heard from residents that they didn't think they were needed, most of those, if I remember correctly, came from residents that don't live on Meadow Lane, correct?
Correct. Those, most of those comments came from residents that live on, what would be the side streets of Meadow Lane?
Were there any comments favorable or unfavorable that you noticed from the residents that lived on Meadow Lane?
The Meadow Lane comments were mainly, I'd say, negative in nature related to the One positive, one does jump to mind, that I know one person was very happy with the installation of them out there.
I live within sight of it. I live on Meadow Lane, and the aesthetics are not very pleasing, but six miles an hour is a lot to slow down, and it's noticeable.
My perspective, I think, is an extremely well-done study. You're thorough, you've got concrete results from the things that you're trying to do. You installed traffic calming devices, they actually slowed the traffic down, you've got some documentation of that. There's no variability, every place it actually reduced it some, either two, three, six miles per hour, and I agree with Jessica Wojewski, that's, six miles an hour is a big thing. I wouldn't worry too much about the aesthetics. I think we need to be more concerned about safety and speed, it relates directly to safety in an area that's that residential and has got a lot of kids. At least I assume, so I don't live there, so I think it has a lot of children. So, I think it's very well done. I would recommend you go ahead with the program that you're talking about and implementing. I'd like to see us actually do that, because Meadow Lane has been an issue for, I don't know, six, seven years, speeding down there. We've talked about it, this is the first time we've got concrete numbers and a thorough study, well-documented study that says we need to go ahead, so I would certainly support going ahead with it and spending money as needed to implement it. I think that's important. You did raise the question of the curb extensions, making the stop signs more visible, did you check to see if that had any impact? Anybody, I mean, you wouldn't, I obviously don't have the data from, because you've got speed data, but anybody visually?
Yeah, that's a little bit more subjective regarding the visibility of the stop signs, but at least at the location of Pavilion and Meadow, I think there's some additional things we can do with signing, with signing itself, advanced, you know, stop sign ahead signs that may be, well, they definitely be more cost-effective than putting in the curb extensions there. And maybe where we, if we are going to install curb extensions somewhere, it's in an area that gets more pedestrian traffic.
That would make sense. People will respect pedestrians if there's a logical crossing. A lot of the streets probably don't have that many pedestrians, but near a school, you certainly would, so that might be more effective, so. The other thing I would consider, since we're talking about resurfacing Pilcher next year, I would highly recommend that we go through this kind of analysis with the residents along Pilcher and see what kind of, what we can do to slow things down there. You've got a nice grab bag of options, and I think, let's see what works.
Yeah, staff is currently coming up with different options for Pilcher Road right now.
Great, that'd make my life a lot simpler if you do. I appreciate that.
I think CN wants to put a spur down there, so it should slow it down.
I think this should be a truck problem.
I have a question, and this might be just too basic, but as I'm looking at your numbers here, and so it looks like a lot of the average speed was about four miles over the posted of 25, some 27, some 29. Would it, maybe this is just too easy, would it be, does it work, in other words, if you change the speed limit? So, if people are averaging three to five miles over, what if you changed it to 20? Are they still going to average three to five over, and now we're really at the level we want them to be?
Yeah, we, speed limits are generally set based on what's called the 85th percentile speed, which is what, basically what, 85% of the motoring public would be traveling, and generally for speed limits to be effective, they need to be within five miles an hour, that range. And generally, average speed is, it's not the same as 85th percentile speed, but it's in the same ballpark, so lowering the speed to 20 miles an hour probably would have negligible effect.
The road profile largely drives that, right? Right? And that...
Yeah.
I just wonder if there's not some human nature part of it, so in other words, if people feel comfortable, you know, going five miles over the speed limit and not having to end up with a ticket or something, then, you know, if that's 25, then I'm okay, I'm going to feel comfortable doing 30. If it's 20, I'm going to feel comfortable doing 25. I don't know, but...
It's not a bad thought, what you're getting at, but I know that, and this happened before I got here, but Van Dyke Road was one of those roads that we had stated as a 35 mile an hour road, and it, the road profile calls for it to be a, well, it depends on where you're located, but as much as a 45 mile an hour road, and people were using it as a 45 mile an hour road even though it was posted at 35. So, it's a question of making sure that your road profiles match what your preferred outcome is, which is part of the reason why we have this Meadow Lane issue, is it's a little bit wider, so that's why you get a little bit elevated speed. It's a good question that you asked.
I mean, I just look at, I know there's a neighboring community of ours that's Norman Town Road, I think it is, and it's a four-lane road, and yet you go through there, and I think the speed limit's 25 miles an hour, which to you, I think the, you know, you look at it, and you're like, trying to do 25 on a four-lane road is very difficult to go that slow. I don't know how effective it is from a policing standpoint, I don't know, but are you familiar with that section?
No, I'll have to go take a look.
I think it's Norman Town Road, it's the one that's just east of Weber, goes towards the school, and then it drops back to two lanes.
That's a faster track in the morning than maybe you went through, because I traveled it this morning.
But isn't it posted really low?
There's that school that's posted as you get closer to 53, but the other one is, I think it's 35. But the cars are definitely not doing 35.
The Lakelands did have their posted speed limit to 20, and we have our own streets, and if the chief remembers, I think you were involved, or maybe it was Chief Bennett, but we were told you couldn't, you would not enforce it at 20, because IDOT or Universal Road rules say residential areas are 25, and you could enforce 25, but you could not enforce 20.
That's correct, and again, as was mentioned, it's all based on the geography of the road, the formulas that are put together through the manual of uniform traffic control devices, and the, as Brian mentioned, the profile of the road as well. That's how the speed limits are determined, yes.
You don't enforce 20 anywhere, do you?
At school, in school zones, we do.
Well, in school zones, if the lights are flashing.
Yeah, in school zones, yeah.
I have one minor question for you, Scott. You said the lights are laid, do we have any timetable for the Meadow and 126?
I had spoken to IDOT last week, and they had, they were hopeful it was going to be in the next couple of weeks. I did not have an exact date. What I was told was the actual signals themselves are going to be the black powder-coated signals, and they were being painted, so that's what I was told the holdup was.
Yes, one minor comment. You know, Mr. Threewood, you had to chart a very narrow course with this particular program. There's an old saying, you do something right, no one remembers, you do something wrong, no one forgets. In this particular situation, you know, I look at your mission statement for the complete streets policy, and what everyone wants, they want calm streets, but they don't want any distraction. They want safe streets, but they don't want any distraction. You, you know, a question was asked, did you reach out to the community? I felt your program was throughout the entire summer when you were at the car shows and the mailings. It was an open program. If anyone wanted to be able to offer a suggestion to you, they could have done so. So, I don't think you have to answer any criticism on that particular fashion. I think you did a great job with this, and like I say, the mission statement is completely done, and what it will do is bring calmness and safety to streets. I spoke with a number of residents on South Meadow, and they were very disturbed over the years about people in the morning speeding through, speeding through, speeding through. We have to stop that because it's dangerous, and this entire program, I think, is a real step in the positive direction. Thank you for your work.
I do appreciate that, but it is a group effort. The planning department also helped spearhead this, so it is a group effort between a few departments here in Public Works, or in the village, I should say.
No, I'm glad you said it's a complete effort. Obviously, I overlooked the fact you were the leader in the particular thing, and I think you could disseminate all the positive remarks made by this board to your team, because they do great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next steps for next year, we'll continue doing the temporary measures, oh, I'm sorry.
Comment Administrator Murphy, what kind of a timeline, if there's consensus of the board to make some of these temporary structures more permanent? I agree with what Trustee Wojew had said about seeing such a reduction in speed, it only may be a few miles per hour, but that does drastically increase the, or decrease the stopping distance on a residential neighborhood with children. So, if something, for example, as I put on page seven, you said it was about $50,000, we said it was about $50,000, what steps and what kind of timeline does staff need with board direction to say, you know what, let's make option A, C, and J permanent instead of temporary? What do we need to make some of that move forward?
Yes, sir, that's a very good question. What I think we'll continue to do is test those temporary measures out at other, the other locations as Mr. Threewood had identified in this coming year, and as we go forward in programming for this upcoming budget year, we'll take a look at what measures we can accomplish within the capital budget. As was mentioned, the traffic circle seems to have a pretty decent effect. The concerns were of those aesthetic nature. There are some permanent examples in some residential neighborhoods in Naperville, for example, so we get a chance to take a look at how some of those are designed and installed for those aesthetic purposes, and we'll work to include those in with our capital budget, our street budget that we have coming up. Mr. Threewood and Mr. Jesson have identified, as you know, about $2 million worth of road work to do, so while $50,000 seems like a lot of money, it might be something that we can indeed program in within a timeframe. However, at the same time, they'll probably want to time those projects in with when we're doing some street resurfacing within that area, so that it's a little bit more programmed out.
Excellent, thank you very much.
One other quick question. One of the pictures shows a green bike lane. Any idea how much it costs to do that per mile? Half mile?
Off the top of my head, off the top of my head, I do not.
Might be worth checking. Driving into Evanston periodically, I notice they have a bike lane that's green, they also have little markers to indicate that, and it makes it a whole lot safer, and when you get into the Pilcher Road one, one of the issues there, we have markings there, but the markings eventually fade, whereas a green paint may not, or it may actually convince people that that's not a regular car lane. So, if it's not too expensive, it's, at least find out the cost of that, so maybe throw it in the equation for Pilcher studies, so.
That can be done, and I know the City of Chicago Department of Transportation uses the green bike lane markings as well.
Okay, let's see what it costs, I have no idea either.
Next item on the agenda is 2016-2017 fiscal year budget.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we're going to talk about the Water and Sewer Division, and believe it or not, we are nearing the end of our series and presentations on the different sections of the budget after this evening. There will be several opportunities for the board to make comments, the public to make comments too as well, to evaluate the draft document too as well. There's a public hearing before the adoption of the budget, and as Tracy's nodding her head, we still have plenty of time, but typically after the first of the year, the draft head, we still have plenty of time, but typically after the first of the year, the draft budget is ready for the public to review and make comments too as well. So tonight's actually the last, I think the last presentation, later today. So tonight is as much an update about where we're at with Water and Sewer Division, and basically what's been accomplished, kind of looking at it from a business and part, part and parcel, and where we're headed here in the future. So I'll go through the slides very briefly, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. So first of all, in our mission statement, and this is the same for Streets, as well as the Engineering Division, I won't read it word for word, but I will tell you that its core is serving our community to the best of our ability, providing the highest level of service that we can, while protecting our employees at the same time and providing them opportunities for advancement within the organization. So with the next slide. Over the past several years, our population has grown, this is akin to the chief's presentation about officers and just the growth of the community. Overall, you know, the population has grown significantly from 2006, where we were about seven thousand people, to about forty thousand people here, as far as residents are concerned. Our employee to staff ratio has gone from approximately two and a half employees per thousand residents, down to point eight employees per thousand residents today within Public Works. And there are a number of different reasons for that, I'll go into it just briefly in the, in the following slides. But some of those things have to do with technology, it's not just cutting back to save money or things like that too as well. So with that, to the next slide. This is a similar slide that you've seen within the Street Department Division too as, as well, or presentation as well. In two thou, in nineteen ninety-six, we had eighteen full-time employees within Public Works. That was when we had about two and a half employees per thousand residents. As of today, we have thirty-two full-time employees within Public Works, and you can see the change. We kind of rode the wave with the economy, but when the economy did taper back a little bit, well, we followed that too as well. We, we cut back and we were fiscally responsible, because the revenue wasn't coming in the way it was before. By the same token, there were some areas where we weren't installing as many, nearly as many new water meters, we weren't doing as many inspections as we had in the past. There just wasn't the workload that was created during that two thousand five, six, seven, eight time, and we adjusted accordingly. So from 2009 to 2015, our workforce in Public Works was reduced by twenty-five percent, and actually thirty percent in the Water and Sewer Division. Now, tonight, I'll preface that, we're not asking for any new employees within Water and Sewer. I know Mr. Kissel and Mr. Stoffco just sighed back there behind me, I heard it. But we hope at some point in the future, as the Village continues to grow, the fund gets more healthy, and the need is there too for additional people in the workforce, that that is in the future here. As far as the organizational chart is concerned, there are ten employees within the Water and Sewer Division. There's one adjustment in here, the wastewater maintenance worker actually works within building maintenance, and takes care of the buildings at the wastewater facility, so half of that individual's time is spent within Public Works overall, and not specifically at the wastewater facility. So you truly have the water superintendent and four employees, and the wastewater superintendent and four employees to operate the entire division, and they do an outstanding job. Part of the cost savings related to Public Works as a whole was, before we built the Public Works facility, we were actually operating out of three different buildings, and that really presented a problem with sharing equipment, finding things that were needed, parts and things like that, organizing crews, sharing employees and things like that. So a little over ten years ago, when the Public Works facility was completed, it actually created a great deal of efficiencies within the department. Departments could share employees, they could share equipment, they had a good handle on where things were at. So there, that was, there was actually great cost savings to bring everything under one roof. And now we also have the Building Department within that same facility, and that does add some efficiencies as well, where it creates better communications between the Building Department, where we can move, move more efficiently on projects too as well. So there's great cost savings there. The Lake Water Station, huge cost savings in electricity, and we don't really go back far enough in this budget to show some of those things, because when you, you really have to look back at the tenure, and then you have to factor in the changes in costs for electricity, so it's a little tricky to do that. But the Lake Water Facility with the advanced technology, the way it provides water to what we consider to be the high zone and the lower zone within the community, that means everyone gets generally the same pressure, it doesn't mean that there's higher pressure in one part of the community or others. But since there's a grade difference in the community of about a hundred feet from the north side of the community to the south side of the community, we have to take that into consideration, and there are two different zones, there are actually three different zones, which one is controlled, computer, computer-controlled, and it's very advanced. But all these things help add efficiencies. What was interesting is when we had the last Chinese delegation out, and they visited the station, they had asked how many people actually work in the Lake Water Station? And at first, I was a little puzzled, and I said, well, there's one employee that comes in in the morning, and they said that, and the employee stays all day, and another employee comes in at night. I said, no, there's one employee that comes in in the morning and stays for about an hour, to make sure that everything's operational, because this is interconnected to our computer SCADA system, the employees can have access, make changes, there are alarms and things like that. It's highly, highly automated, and that does help save money in labor too as well. So we save money in labor, we save money in electricity, and on top of that, there's additional capacity for the growth, commercial growth, industrial growth, and residential growth too as well. The wastewater treatment facility is also one of the highest-tech wastewater facilities within our region and within the state of Illinois too as well, and we're very proud of that. It does take some labor to keep it running, but there again, you know, five employees to operate this entire facility, over two hundred miles of wastewater mains out there, sewer lines, and then seventeen pumping stations out there. It's amazing that these individuals, the low number of individuals can take care of all these things, and it's really based on their abilities that have been learned and have been trained to take care of these things, and also the technology that's built within the facility too as well. So I have to give both the superintendents credit for encouraging their employees, because they're more than just water and wastewater operators, they are technicians, and they are very experienced, and they do a great job at keeping things running. So wastewater plant is a great, great amenity. The next slide, you'd be surprised at the number of communities that I come and contact with that either are not doing radio reads as far as water meters are concerned, or they're just starting into the process. And I get calls on a regular basis as to, how does this work? How do I begin? What's the best thing to do? And, you know, I have to bite my tongue, I think we're going on about fifteen or sixteen years that we've embraced this technology and utilized it. It took us a while to become fully automated, but that was a little over ten years ago, and it's worked out very, very well. One employee can read all the water meters within the community in less than a day. So if you think about that, the readings automatically download here at the Village Hall, there's very little labor that's involved in creating and generating the water billing process too as well. So that saves the Village money. As far as our employees, we have four Class A EPA certified water managers. That means that they have the qualifications based from the state of Illinois to operate any size water treatment facility. So the, you could have one of these four employees be in charge of the water filtration plant in the City of Chicago, which would be the largest, one of the largest filtration plants in the world. We have three Class One wastewater operators, which is the highest level that you can receive on that site. So the high, the largest wastewater facility in the state, one of our three employees would be qualified to manage that facility too as well. So that's pretty remarkable, because most communities don't have that layer of management, where we have that understanding as to how to operate these complex processes. So I have to credit the employees. If we talk a little bit about water production, we'll switch gears a little bit, and since this slide was so busy here, I did provide a copy, and I provided a copy to the audience members too as well, so it's not just the board. We'll be happy to, I'd rather do it after we get through December, so we get the final numbers for the year, but I'd be happy to post this on the website too as well. This is our water production over the past seven or eight years, and did provide a copy to the board, and it just shows where we're at as far as the amount of water that's been produced and provided, treated and provided for the community. And it's really interesting to look at. We track these things very carefully, because it does, it is akin to water sales. Now, we pay for every gallon that comes through the pipeline, so if people conserve water, we pay less for water, and then we charge less for water. So it, there is a relationship there too as well. So, but with that, if you look back, and I have on the slide here, we'll leave it on that slide. In 2007, we had the highest ever water pumpage for a given year, and that was a little over one point two, almost one point three billion gallons for a year. We had eight percent water loss that year, and that's important when you look at some of the other numbers. In 2012, it was the second highest year that we ever had, at one point two, almost the same number, billion gallons of water at two percent water loss. So in actuality, when you factor in the water loss, there was more water that was sold in two thousand, per gallon, sold in 2012. And that was after the economy kind of tapered off, so it's really based on the usage at the time, it was a hotter, drier year and things like that. Two thousand eight was the third highest, that was in the, kind of the other side of the boom, but there were still some newer lawns. Two thousand thirteen was the fourth highest, another hot, dry year too as well, at two percent water loss. And interestingly enough, and we're confident, even if we come in with a very average number, that this year, this past year will be the fifth highest year ever. And it's interesting, because this is, has been one of the wettest and one of the coolest summers that we've had, and you can see that in the summer, numbers are lower than average, but our winter numbers are higher than average. And it indicates the growth of the community, that we are getting more users, we're getting more commercial users, industrial users, even on the residential side too, is more, more users. So it shows a very strong, although managed growth, let's put it that way, and it's always interesting to see some of these peaks, especially in 2012, to have a couple of days at a hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy thousand, or million gallons is really impressive. But it, and it shows the ability for us to provide water, quite a bit of capacity too as well, so. Jonathan, if you want to move on. Water that we provide for the community, it's basically a penny, it's one point two pennies for every gallon of water for the average user, and I get a little depiction there, but that's not only for water, that's also for wastewater, that's also to cover our debt service, capital costs too as well. So that's for the entire thing, is a little over a penny a gallon. Our average household will use about two dollars and fifty-two cents worth of water and sewer services per day. Our minimum household user will spend about seventy-three cents per day, per household for water and sewer service too as well. We do have some new information this year, IDNR completed, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources completed a water rate survey. Now, keep in mind, before I talk about this a little bit, just to give you an idea, usually IDNR completes a survey every ten years, but they decided to do one at 2015 to get a better gauge, since the City of Chicago has increased rates significantly over the past four years. How has this impacted the other communities that receive Lake Michigan water? Keep in mind that the people in the state of Illinois that receive Lake Michigan water are in the neighborhood of about six point five million people in the Chicagoland area. Now, they're just under three million people in the City of Chicago. So the majority of the Lake Michigan water actually is provided to the suburbs in some way, shape, or form. And Evanston has their own system, so there's a little mix in there too as well. But even if you take in account all of that information, and take all the communities, over a hundred and seventy communities within the Chicagoland area are on Lake Michigan water, that their, their research and their study indicates, and you can turn to the very last page after the budget report, and I don't mean to jump all over the place, but Plainfield's rate right now is seven dollars and seventy-eight cents per thousand gallons. The average rate for the over a hundred and seventy communities within the whole Chicagoland area came in at seven dollars and ninety-seven cents per thousand gallons. And that actually placed Plainfield two point four percent below the average of all of the rates for all of the other communities within the Chicagoland region. Now, this is, I think it's an important fact to know, but by the same token, keep in mind that this doesn't take in account, for the most part, any fixed charges, like meter charges, fire system charges, capital charges, things like that. This was strictly the rate. But you'll find rates that are all over the board, well over ten dollars a thousand, five dollars a thousand, and it really does vary depending on the community. But again, it doesn't take in account the capital charge, or the meter charge, or the fire system charge too as well. That'd be a more comprehensive study, but IDNR doesn't typically go to that level. I will say that to say this, if you look at the 2010 average rate of five dollars and twenty-two cents, the rate on average in five years for all of the Lake Michigan water communities has increased by over fifty percent. So there has been quite an increase in the area, but by the same token, we are at the end of the pipeline. I mean, we are the furthest away from the Giardine Water Filtration Plant, but we're still very close to the average for the area. So I, I think it's something that the community should be proud of, that we're not that far off, and that the, the budget is very healthy too as well. So with that, we'll move on to the next slide. Projections for water distribution, or water wholesale purchase costs, these are not the costs that we charge our residents, these are the costs that we incur from the City of Chicago, and then through the Lake Water Pipeline, the American Lake Water Pipeline. As you can see, there was significant increase from 2008, through the Dailly Administration, there were some significant bumps over a three-year period, and then through the Emanuel Administration, there was actually a five-year plan to increase rates, which were implemented. We are now into the period, as of 2000, first of 2016, the rate is supposed to remain consistent with the producer's price index, which that number will come out later too as well, but we expect it to be close to CPI too as well. It may be higher than that, I'm getting the signal, it'll probably be higher than that, but still much more manageable than the twenty-four, twenty-five percent increase that we had one year, and then the fifteen, fifteen, and fifteen, or fifteen, fifteen, and fourteen, which were some significant increases. Now, I say that, you think about the City of Chicago, the residents of the City of Chicago had to incur that increase too as well. That this went to the Supreme Court at one time, the City of Chicago cannot charge more for people outside of the City of Chicago than they can charge their own residents. That's already been through the court system. So when they increase the rates, they have to increase the rates for the residents, as well as people outside of the city. But since we're further out, we do pay some additional funds to get the water transferred to the city through the pipeline, basically. In the past ten years, the average increase for wholesale water purchase costs has been six percent. Due to our growth and some of our adjustments in the tougher times in the economy, our residential rate over the last ten years has only increased three percent per year on average. That's water and sewer too as well as a whole. So on the positive side, our improved bond rating continues to save us money for our residents, as the refinancing of the, of the debt here over the last couple of the years, and the, and the better rates as far as the bonds are concerned are a very positive thing. So the residents see that in the savings in the rate, which is outstanding. The water and wastewater systems are well in compliance with the EPA regulations, we're very pleased with that. The water quality is excellent, we get a lot of, still several comments as to how great quality, what the great quality of Lake Michigan water is like, and not having to soften water and all those things too as well. We have additional capacity for future growth that's built into both systems, the water and wastewater system. The water loss continues at an all-time low of two percent, and I have to thank Mr. Stoffco and his, his team related to that, they continue to work on this. We completed a water leak survey, we continued, last year, we changed out meters, they fixed main breaks in a timely fashion, and they're still well below two percent. And interestingly enough, water conservation over the past ten years, our residents used twelve percent less water per household than they did ten years ago. So even with this water conservation, now, we, showerheads, toilets, even washing machines, I think are probably one of the biggest advances in saving water too as well. Our residents are using 12% less water, and on this chart here, we're still pumping just about the same that we did over the past five, six years, which is really a good testament to the fact that the village continues to be healthy and continues to grow too as well. On the last, next to the last slide that I have for the future, we have a few things. The Route 30 reconstruction will continue to bring opportunities for replacing water and wastewater lines. I'm happy to report that it was less than a month ago, they did complete the crossing of Route 30 with a large diameter water and sanitary sewer main to service the boulevards, the boulevards property there, future commercial redevelopment area at that location. There will be an upgrade at the lift station, there'll be some new pumps, some new pumping equipment too as well, at that location to take on some additional capacity. We did make our payment to the state, they accepted our check, that was interesting. They accepted our check, they cashed it right away too as well. They accepted our check. So we paid our half of our proportionate share, this is mainly for the utilities. Will be billed for the remaining half, probably two to three years out in, in the future. And you'll see that reflected on the capital side, that we don't have much money budgeted for Route 30 South, I'm going to call it. Because we did pay our proportionate share for some of the work that's already been done, and some of the work that's going to be done here in the near future. And we will be billed a couple of years down the road. Route 30 North, which in, in essence is that area that's near Diageo, near Tower Number Two, we call it, it's out in the, out near Route 30. And along Route 30 to the north in the Kusakowski area, it's an older water main, we'd like to increase the size and replace that. We did include some engineering money last year, and even some construction money. That should be out to bid here shortly in the early part of the year, and there is funding in there for the, for the construction of that. And then we have some money for some routine maintenance, which is a little more intense. We have some larger pumps that need to be replaced at the wastewater treatment plant that we're going to bid out, that were part of the original, the original construction of the plant. They're going to be bid out shortly. And then also, as far as equipment is concerned, we have a utility truck that has a crane on the truck. And this was a perfect piece of equipment when we bought it approximately 14 years ago. Since then, the pumps have gotten larger, and that in some areas, it's even more challenging to lift the pumps. So the department has requested, Mr. Kissel has requested, that we replace that truck with a larger truck, with a larger crane that can lift the new pumps at the wastewater treatment facility. And then also back to Route 30 is an awkward area, and there are going to be some large pumps over there to take that entire region to be able to lift those pumps too as well. So there'll be a request for that piece of equipment, along with the replacement of a pickup truck. But that, in essence, and lastly, part of our revenue to take care, offset some of our debt service does come from a sales tax. That's not uncommon in communities. I know that ultimately, at some point, we would, like internally, we would like to grow out of that at some point. We don't see that in the near term, but at some point, that that would be a good plan for the future, as we continue to grow, to grow out of that too as well. But just to recognize, for the residents out there, that we're doing everything we can, and I know the mayor and board, to keep the rate as low as possible. Part of that is offsetting the debt service with some of the sales tax money too as well. So lastly, we have the sheet with all the numbers, and then we have the, the information that was provided in the packet. So with that, I'll turn this over to questions, or Tracy, if you want, you have some closing.
Sure. Sure, I can speak, I can speak briefly on the budget that you have in your, in your packet, and primarily on the summary page is where you're going to see most of my conversations moving towards. The, the budget between the current that we're in, in fiscal 16, to the proposed in 17, is just under a 4% increase, it's actually 3.8%, $600,000. And relatively speaking, you're looking mostly at contractual services increasing, primarily because of the cost of, of water to, per gallon that we're paying as a village. Now, keep in mind that the revenue offsets slightly with the contractual services line, and it's an estimate at the beginning of the year. And so the 8.6 million, that includes water and sewer, I mean, the 8.6 million includes the water charge that we have estimated, and some smaller contractual services in the detail that you'll see. But again, historically, you can see where we've, under contractual services, where the village has ended up at the end of the year, but seeing the trends that we're having so far, staff was comfortable where we had our projections to date for fiscal 17. You will also notice on the expense side, that the transfer number has increased, and that transfer number is a transfer directly to debt service. This, the village is, has a level debt, debt service payment that happens throughout all of our debts that we have for the village. And so what happens when a bond issue has been paid off, something will offset and continue to keep level debt service across the whole village expenditure. So the 970,000 that's increased on the transfer, there's a reduction within, I believe, our capital fund of debt service that needs to be paid from that fund. This has been, this is the way it's programmed, this is the way that all our debt service has been covered historically. It's been something that staff has looked at, and we've been realizing that this was coming into this year. So it's not a surprise in any way, shape, or form, I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case you had a question, what that transfer was directly related to. And the reason that it transfers to debt service is because a portion of the debt that they're paying off is funded from other sources. So it's only a portion of water and sewer that's covering that 970,000. You can notice right below it, as Alan mentioned, the capital expenditures that staff is looking to propose for this next fiscal year has been reduced significantly from the current. Primarily, again, it's the Route 30 expansion, which we will not need to expend for another probably one to two years, if not longer. If you recall, on the Route 59 expansion, when we did that, it was a number of years before the state actually invoiced our final payment that we needed to make. So we're well aware of it. In actuality, we're going to reserve those funds in the background on the staff level and as part of the audit, but from a budgetary perspective, it's not something that'll need to be expended for next fiscal year. All the other, other revenue sources seem to be relatively consistent. Surprisingly, our, our sales tax, which is the state of Illinois taxes, has been consistent throughout, historically throughout the past three years. I would have anticipated a slightly, slight higher increase from year to year, it's just not happening on the home rule sales tax side. So we felt internally that we should keep that number relatively consistent with the current fiscal year, so there's not a huge change between 16 and 17. From a staffing perspective, no new hires. We've had a couple changes within the staffing, so you'll see some of those numbers actually flat, because benefit decisions on the employee level, they may be a single employee coming in where there was a family employee prior. So, so we're seeing very stable numbers on our salary and benefits numbers for this fund as well. So with that, that's my overall summary, I'd be happy to go through any of the detail within the pages of the water and sewer fund, and answer any other questions that you might have.
I noticed dropped depreciation off, I assume we have a calculation for that.
Yeah.
Know how much it should be, that's why we've been at the hole the last three years.
Right. And, and the last three years, you can see that it's just about 3.1 million, so we're anticipating about the same.
Yeah, we haven't had a year that we've ever covered the full cost of depreciation. We have covered a portion of it thereof, but usually we do end up falling, as you know, about $2 million shy of hitting our total depreciation costs.
Yeah, I guess my recommendation is that we show that, eventually we do. We're showing it zero now, because we're saying, we're not making money on the water and sewer. And that's, I understand that part of it, but our own bookkeeping for the board, we need to know that we're not covering the full cost that we should be recovering, so. That's one question. I, I think you perhaps answered it, well, there's two other questions. One, you've transferred to debt service, is that in three different places? Is that the difference between the 4.98 and the 9.70?
Correct, yeah. Their debt service payment for those specific debt issues are, have increased for the next fiscal year.
Yeah, they're all the same, but the three pieces.
Right, water, sewer, and probably utility expansion.
One's administration, and the other's, okay. Now, the other question I've got is the capital charge, which we've had the discussion of. I'm not quite sure I know what's reflected in the change. It doesn't look like it's the 50 cent change, it looks like a little bit more than that. What is the basis that takes us down to the 1, 1,170 on the capital charge?
That's reflecting a 50 cent decrease in the capital charge for next fiscal year.
Hey, let me register an opinion, and I, I suggest we either keep it at the $8, or take it down to $7. $6 to an average household is not significant. I hate the answer, oh, we really did you a favor, we took, saved you $6. $10 may be a little bit better, but, you know. And then you count it, we have $8 and take it down 50 cents, that's 16 more years of the capital charge. And I'd rather not have that argument either, I'd rather say we need the cap, need to leave it where it is because we have a purpose for it. This is not a new comment, I've made it before, but seeing it's reflected here, I'd just soon have us do one or the other personally, that's where I would go. And if we're not covering the depreciation, I'll leave it at the eight. Until such time as we can make a significant reduction in it. I don't know if the rest of the board agrees with that or not, but.
I'd like to see it reduced to 50 cents in the next year, possibly reduce it again and thereafter, so at one point, we can dismiss the whole charge. So it's unusual, it's unusual for government to give back or cut down it once they got it. So that's why it was, I think, suggested, and I was all for that. And if it can be done incrementally, I believe that's the way we should do it.
I'm forgetting about two, I like a total of dollars, it's just psychological.
Now, that was, that is something that the mayor's been very strong on asking staff to do as well, is to get this charge off the bill as quickly as we can. As you can see, the, there's the other side of it too, which is, we, we also have some very large water users and, and that do a wonderful job offsetting a large portion of our costs. We, we need to remain competitive on both ends of the, of the spectrum with regard to what we charge. And so we're, it is a bit of a balancing act, but we do have the, we do have the direct understanding of the board that, and especially the mayor, that would like to see us get that off of the bill. And to that end, that's what we'd like to do.
What is, I'm sorry, what's the current schedule for that to expire?
Right now, we're going into year two of a three-year ordinance with the villi, with the rates. So this year's rates are set by ordinance, and next year's rates are also set by ordinance. So we'll have a chance to revisit it again in, well, it'll be two years, that we will revisit the, the rates structure, and that'll give us a little bit more time to see what's happening with regard to our, our construction efforts as well. Each, part of the issue is, and why, why, how it came, this, how this came about, is that we had largely used the water and sewer impact fees that we charge for each new construction to cover the costs of the capital improvements that were made at the wastewater treatment plant, and also made at the Lake Michigan water pumping station. And while the economy was booming, we were very well able to cover those capital costs, the, the bond costs and the like. With the downturn in the economy, we can't cover those costs. So we implemented a, a flat rate charge that helped satisfy some of the concerns of the bonding rating agencies, that we have a guaranteed stable minimum that will be coming in, that can help to offset those capital, that can be used to go pay those capital charge, bond costs. And, and that actually helped us to improve our bond rating. The understanding of the board, and the, the direction of the board is, let's get rid of that though as quickly as we can. So as we're seeing an increase in that commercial activity, as we're seeing an increase in water and sales and the like, it does help us to be able to offset those numbers. When we set the rates a year and a half ago, you know, we are seeing a slight uptick in building starts, we aren't comfortable enough to fully release all of that, those funds from a, just, you know, the conservative nature of yours truly, and, you know, and I'll throw Mrs. Pluckham in on that one too. It's, but it is something that we do want to see come off the books.
I'm sorry, so, so worst case, when the debt service is paid off, that goes away, and how long for the debt service?
Well, and I would also submit to Trustee Lamb's point, we do not cover depreciation from year to year. We do have a slight reserve for future improvements for capital extensions and replenishments for water and sewer extensions that are, that need to be repaired. So I think there's a good opportunity for the board to discuss the need for such a capital fund, because regardless of water being dropped through the line, there's still a maintenance issue within the pipes itself. So is the logic to continue with a capital-type charge, to continue to fund some sort of future infrastructure improvements, or is it through a rate discussion, and we look at the water and sewer rates differently for that purpose as well? For the ordinance that we have in place, the capital charge will reduce to 7.50 this coming year, and then it will remain the same in fiscal 17, or in year 17, that's what's being proposed. Sewer, the sewer rate will remain the same for the next two years as well, hasn't been increased for a number of years, I don't have the history behind me. And then the water rate will go up slightly again next year. So when we revisit those rates, we can talk about that as well.
All right, so how long is our bond?
Oh, the bonds themselves, for the water and sewer fund, I, I'd have to get that schedule for you, I don't have it handy, but.
Well, the last one that was issued was 2008, and so.
But when does it, when's the last payment on it?
So that would be 20.
20 years out, yeah.
20 years out, thank you.
A couple additional comments. One, have some professional background, if you will, in Mike Dupont's career with Roy's Treatment, and also the engineering things, and I'm continually amazed at what you all do to provide water and sewer services with so few people, and have so few complaints. It's incredible. I don't think we realize how lucky we are. It's not easy to do that, and so your organization needs to take a lot of credit for that. One thing on the IDNR, it doesn't happen to show Bolingbrook. Bolingbrook uses Lake Michigan water, don't they?
Yeah, their, their rate would be directly through Illinois American Water, since the American Lake Water Company, which is American Water, owns the Lake Water Pipeline. Illinois American owns all of the water mains, water towers, water meters, everything within Bolingbrook. So it would fall under Illinois American and that quote-unquote Bolingbrook.
Except they don't list them there. They list a whole bunch of them, but Bolingbrook's not one of them, I'm just curious to what they're paying, because they were very unhappy, and I, I assume it's a very high rate, but I don't see any documentation of that.
They're still paying about 30% more than we are.
All right, thank you.
I, I guess I would agree with Mr. Lamb, I, I think, you know, water is one of those things I think people say is take for granted, you turn your spigot on and, you know, you expect it to be drinkable. So I think one of the positive decisions that the village made over the years was to switch to Lake Michigan water. And obviously now, there's a little bit of cost involved in it, but I think long-term to have that quality, and basically almost, you know, consistent source of water is a huge, because I know there's going to be in other communities around that are still trying to work through the, the deep wells and all those other issues, so. And then the other piece that I would just make the comment on is the, and maybe you can help me express this properly, so we're using some of the, some of the taxes that we receive from the village to help offset the cost of the, of the department, so. And I think if you look at it, it's almost basically what the capital charge is, or even a little bit more than that. So while there is a capital charge on the bill, we are utilizing other funds to help offset what could be even a larger bill for our, for our residents.
You stated that very well, sir.
No, thank you. Or non-accountant, huh?
The other thing is, to that end, the, the village, yeah, it was 2003 when the village made the decision to go to American, to, to Lake Michigan Water. And as well, they were very smart in making the capital improvements that they did make at the wastewater treatment plant and at the Lake Michigan Pumping Station. There are a lot, a lot of towns that have to discourage development and have to discourage investment in their community, because they don't have the wastewater and water services for their, for their community to be able to take on new growth. You know, we are very well positioned in, in that particular regard. As you know, Diageo did a, did an expansion a few years ago, and part of the reason why they took a look at making that investment in Plainfield is, they knew we had the capacity, they knew that our wastewater treatment plant could handle the additional load that they were going to be sending to us, and it was a very easy decision for them to, to invest in our community. So. So, that's just one example of many where that earlier decision is paying off quite well as we look for new growth. It, it's unfortunate that we have to have that capital charge, but it, we still are very well positioned for growth as a result of it.
And just for discussion too, one of our neighboring towns is contemplating picking up Lake Michigan Water, and I believe they're $25 million to $26 million just for limitation. So, it's, it's well worth us that they went to it back when compared to the cost now, so.
And I think, and I think the other, the little piece is that people might not realize, you know, that maybe we're here or weren't, you know, you talk about softer water, but that, you know, I had a water softener in my home at one point before we switched to, you know, so I don't have that cost of salt, I don't have the upgrade of that system, clothes are better, you know, there's a lot of positives associated with the Lake Michigan Water that, you know, sometimes we can take for granted because it is such a quality product.
I believe Trustee Lamb and O'Rourke have some very good points on the rate, and I do believe that we have to be prepared to handle any infrastructure issues that we have with getting water to our residents, as well as I do agree with the idea of eliminating as many charges off individuals' tax bills as possible, but I think for the time being, with Trustee Lamb's comments, I would go ahead with the rate that he recommended.
Okay, if there aren't any other comments?
A quick comment, just for, some information for some of the people, I'm not sure everybody's aware of the contract we have that runs to 2037, and it's a very good contract, we pay a very nominal amount for maintenance and so on, and, so the deal that we have has a long time to run, and we're very fortunate that deal was struck, I think you all negotiated that, but very, very favorable to us, and part of the reason our neighboring towns are very unhappy with us. We have something they want, they're not going to get, so.
It has a, I know this is a long-term, it has a 10-year renewable, continual 10-year renewable terms too as well, so the board at the time, if they're happy with the contract, they can renew it for another 10 years and then another 10 years, and, and it's, it's a good relationship, I agree.
So, if there's no other questions, the board, you'll see all of this documentation back, staff plans on bringing back the full budget, probably either late January or sometime in February, one of those workshops. One of the reasons why we might delay a little bit is because of the state and where they're at with their budget. Hopefully, we'll get some further information as to the revenue side of things with the state, if not, we do have a little bit of tweaks here and there based on the input from the board so far, so we will bring this back at a future workshop, and there'll be ample opportunity to have additional comments and any other questions that you might have. The budget will need to be approved before May 1st, so there's plenty of time to work through some of these questions and get a little more details out of the way if there is anything coming forward.
Mayor Collins, are you with us? Okay. Just one final comment, if you don't mind. You know what, I'd just like to say to the staff, and the, this certainly wasn't a waste of time, and the, the report was not watered down in the least, and it was really well-thought-out. He told me to say, Murphy told me to say that, I was totally innocent, bye.
Yes, we're done with our presentation.
Thank you very much for your comments, thank you.
And it wasn't wastewater.
Reminders?
The planning commission is on the 15th at 7:00 PM, 21st will be our next village board meeting. Our offices will be closed on the 24th and 25th, and the next committee of the whole has been canceled as of this point.
Thinking a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Bucket.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.